Thank you. Good evening. I like to call this Thursday, January 28th, meeting of the Tacoma School District Board of Directors to order. And I'll start by acknowledging that Tacoma Public Schools acknowledges that we are on the traditional ancestral and historical lands of the Puyallup Tribe of Indians. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the Puyallup Tribe. This acknowledgement serves as the first step in honoring our nearest tribal neighbors and partners, the Puyallup Tribe of Indians, and give thanks to allowing us passage to their lands who have inhabited this region since time immemorial. We will make intentional efforts to create inclusive and respectful partnerships that honor indigenous cultures, histories, identities, and sociopolitical realities. Um, will the General Counsel please call a roll?
Yes, good evening. President Cobb?
Here.
Vice President Baumright?
Here.
Director Leon?
Here.
Director Keating?
Here.
Director Strozier?
Here.
And we have a quorum, and also to call our student representatives. Indigo Hill?
Here.
Nathan Essman?
Here.
Caitlin Yee?
Here.
And Jasmine Pearson?
Here.
Right, we have all of our student representatives and alternates as well.
Thank you very much. Um, item number four, adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
I move to adopt the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of adopting the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is adopted. Item five, members of the public wishing to address the board. Just as a note for the public, there's full detailed descriptions about the two options you have currently for submitting public comment. In this time of, um, still, um, uh, uh, executive order requiring us to meet virtually, we've tried to create different options for the community to continue to participate. One, you have an option to, um, provide comment live, and that's when you, um, submit your request 24 hours in advance. And, and there's instructions again on the agenda items and on the website for you to follow. An option two includes including a written public comment. So we have a couple people signed up to give, um, live public comment tonight, so I'll turn it over to the superintendent to read those names and introduce those speakers.
First speaker, uh, Director Cobb is Jim King, speaking regarding the renaming of Wilson High School.
And just as a reminder, Jim, I didn't say, um, and for our other speakers, you'll have three minutes total, and you should see the clock counting down in front of you. So when you get to one minute, you'll see a flash or hear a ding, and then you'll have one additional minute to finish up your comments. Thank you for being here.
Awesome. Thank you. And as a 38-year-long lobbyist, I'm used to three-minute times in front of the legislature, so I'll be able to work this. My name is Jim King. I'm a 1975 graduate of Wilson High School. And to begin with, yes, President Woodrow Wilson was not just a racist, he was the worst racist to ever serve in the presidency of this country. How that taints his other accomplishments is something for the historians to debate. But Wilson High School was not President Woodrow Wilson. We have our own identity, our own history, our own legacy, including the longest winning streak in high school athletics in United States history, the Wilson swim team and Coach Dick Hannula, Olympic gold medalists like Kay Hall and Leo Randolph, excellence in athletics, academics, and civic leadership. And we were not racists. At a time you had race riots at Stadium High School. We had black student body leaders, black athletic leaders. This day, we gather every year, except this past year unfortunately, in reunions, and we all hang out together like we did. We were not Woodrow Wilson. The problem we face is that this process has been a very poor one. There's been very little a chance for public input. Quite frankly, most of us believed the principal had her mind made up before we saw the first News Tribune article and picked a committee that didn't even look at the Wilson legacy, Wilson High School legacy. They looked at the president, and they already know which way they were going to go. There's been very little chance for public comment in this process. The committee rubber stamped the principal's predilections. The superintendent is rubber stamping it and giving it to you tonight. And we really feel that this was a ludicrous report. A hall of Wilsons? What's that supposed to include? Dennis the Minister's neighbor, Mr. Wilson? Or maybe Tim Allen's neighbor from Home Improvement, Wilson? Or my favorite, which was Tom Hanks' friend and Castaway, Wilson the volleyball? Short shrift was given to the legacy of Wilson High School. In addition, in terms of the process, you've got, one vocal name has been presented to you. Why was not Senator Rosa Franklin considered if you were going to change the name? The highest-ranking black woman ever in state government as president pro temp of the state senate. Or why not Lung May, who led the fight for restitution to the poor Chinese that had built the railroad that made this town and then were shipped south by the leading citizens in the Chinese expulsion? You really need to go back, start over, have more public input and more consideration of where this should go. Or you're going to end up like San Francisco, which yesterday decided they had to rename 44 schools, including those named after Washington, Lincoln, and Diane Feinstein. Thank you.
Thank you. Second speaker is Brent Chantler regarding feedback regarding the name change to Wilson High School.
I would like to first take a brief moment to say thank you to all parties involved for allowing me the chance to speak today. I want to start by being emphatically clear. I fully support our district's efforts to be leaders in the fight to end racial inequalities and injustices. I'm not here to provide feedback on that. I very much understand the want to eliminate the name Woodrow Wilson from Tacoma. And I also appreciate and respect the fact that we have people who are willing to take up that cause and have had conversations that can be potentially difficult and volatile. However, I am hoping that the board may be willing to consider my comments as they begin to process this difficult decision. As an alum of Wilson and now a teacher there for almost a decade, Wilson has been home for me for as long as I can remember. That home has been a place for numerous memories and moments for me and more than a half-century of other graduates. My concern is that a complete rebranding could be an action that strips many of us of a large part of our identity. Wilson is ingrained in the community and culture of Tacoma, not Woodrow Wilson. Wilson is all I need to state for people to know where I went. I associate much more with Wilson than I ever have with the name Woodrow Wilson. And I know I am not alone in that thinking. I simply ask the board to consider two things. First, consider the other possible name change of dropping the Woodrow and leaving it as simply Wilson High School. This would continue to send the message that Tacoma will not continue to elevate and celebrate those that unjustly and unfairly oppose people of color and supported those that did. But it would also send the message to Wilson's alumni that there is a respect and an understanding of the legacy that would be lost in a total rebranding. Second to that, I would encourage the board to continue to reach out to the public and continue to gather data and information around this issue before making a choice. I know a survey was sent out, but that was quite a while ago. And I'm sure that it was likely not to receive the amount of responses hoped for to gather adequate data. I know there are other alumni who carry more public weight and clout than I do backing this recommendation. I also know that in the end, a name is just a name. But like our own personal names, all names carry part of an identity with them. They help shape who we are. I hope the board is at least willing to make my comments into consideration as they begin to weigh this choice. I am very much okay with Woodrow being eliminated from the school's name, but I would like to encourage to keep the name Wilson so some of our identity can remain intact. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Those are the only two speakers.
Okay, thank you very much. So with that, we will move on to item number, um, six, recognition of staff, students, and community. Deputy Senate, Deputy Superintendent Garcia, are you reading this introduction?
I did not have, my computer's frozen on the agenda side, so I'm scrambling trying to scroll it.
Uh, maybe I see Ms. Allen's face. If she has her agenda item, maybe she can step in for you.
Sure, I'm happy to. We have a slideshow, uh, January is Whole Child Month, and I really want to thank you all for allowing time on the busy board schedule to recognize a few of our sites this evening. Um, so if the, the PowerPoint is there, I'm sure it'll be much more entertaining.
And I have the official language to get us going. The deputy superintendent recommends that the Board of Directors recognize the nominated schools as this year's whole child schools.
Thank you.
Great. So, uh, tonight I'll just share a few highlights with you, a peek into, uh, the whole child world. But of course, this is not representative of all the great work throughout the district or even at these schools. Just a quick next slide. I will move quickly through these.
Laura, can you see the slides?
I believe it's still on the first one, so if we could advance, that'd be great.
The first one was Fawcett. It's showing right now?
There we go. Fawcett Falcons, uh, they are exceptional at signature practices, from warm welcomes to emotion check-ins, um, and morning meeting circles that use, they also use SEL as a lever for equity. So one example of that, their anti-racist instruction committee created an inclusive library for students and staff, ensuring that each individual is understood and honored. And their whole child work continues through COVID through this really innovative remote learning recognition system and remote restorative practices. Not easy to pull off. Next slide.
Gray Middle School.
Yes, at Gray Middle School, they're working hard to build feelings of belonging and identity amongst their students. So for social-emotional learning, Gray has a daily advisory time with recent SEL lessons like naming strengths, managing stress, and self-awareness. But on Wednesdays, Gray turns it up a notch with Wake Up Wednesdays, and they bring the whole school together for school-wide community building. Here they do an emotion check-in using zones of regulation. They learn about an SEL strategy that they can put into place in that moment, and they have a guest speaker from the community. So students get a chance to ask questions of the guest speaker. It's really awesome.
Next slide, please, Tom. The Lister Lines.
And let me tell you about Lister Elementary. Um, Lister holds SEL, Equity, Student Voice at the forefront of who they are and all that they do. They are dedicated to implementing deliberate systems and practices to sustain racial justice using preventative whole child measures. So Lister developed an intricate system for restorative practices, pioneered daily SEL lessons by teachers. And while most, each student received at-home an SEL kit, so they are able to practice their calming strategies and peace centers while being at home. Um, Lister is also an exemplar in partnering with families on social-emotional learning. Next slide. Manitow Park Elementary supports both students and adults through whole child practices. For example, this year they implemented live emotion check-ins four times a week, 20 minutes a day with students, and they developed a system for immediate follow-up for students who needed some extra support that day. They also do whole-school morning meetings, uh, that focus on topics like friendship and culture and background. And additionally, Manitow Park recognizes the importance of adult social-emotional learning through practices like their Bulldog Puddles for staff where they bring in guests to discuss topics like self-care and equity. And the next slide. Jenny Reed Elementary. Uh, they strive to ensure that all students, staff, and family feel heard, supported, and valued for the unique qualities they bring to the Jaguar team. Reed innovates with how to Jag. This is a, uh, whole-child-focused first-three-weeks-of-school roadmap. They also have families, our student leaders in grades four through five, that lead community building with the younger grades. Chance for student leadership is always terrific. Uh, and also Reed pioneered, is a pioneer in using robust data systems to progress-monitor their cell action plan. Next slide, please. At Roosevelt Elementary, they use teams to lead their whole child framework. In addition to SEL lessons for all students, Roosevelt creates space for staff members to build on their own SEL skills by using time during staff meetings for goal-setting, um, discussions about racial equity, and self-reflections on adult SEL. Roosevelt uses data to drive their SEL action plans, like climate survey data, exclusionary discipline data, and attendance data. Next slide. So I got to tell you about Sammy. Um, at Sammy, you will find a family mentor model. This is a multi-age, uh, mentor model where, uh, students are with the same family from their freshman year to their, um, senior year. Uh, they're mixed in age groups, so the older students can help out the younger ones, and they have a teacher there. And in that group, they will check in with relationship circles, and they also use restorative circles as an alternative path to repair, repair harm to the community. A really cool thing that they do at Sammy is they have peer-led restorative justice. And those student leaders even train staff on RJ practices. Next slide. So SODA commits to relationship-building structures for mentor, for, um, their mentor groups. Additionally, they've expanded their four pillars to include equity. So their four pillars are empathy, community, thinking, and balance. And they've expanded those to include things like hearing from students and family and community panels to understand their stories and experiences. Um, they have strategies for incorporating relationship-building circles and mentor groups. They are more aware of privilege and bias and truth-telling to reframe their approach. And they also have monthly student-led panels to increase student voice. Next slide. At Stafford Elementary, one key, uh, to Stafford's success is staff-driven, school-wide focus on brain-based learning and monthly character traits. Those like compassion and optimism and gratitude. These are taught in classrooms, they're supported by teachers and counselors, and then they're reinforced through monthly communication and recognition. Stafford sets two times each day for relationship-building and SEL skills. And they even figured a way, uh, to create a remote program for student leadership. Next slide. At Stewart, I got to tell you about Stewart Panthers, because the teachers there, they lead conversation circles. They have small group check-ins. They have collaborative study groups. They send postcards, and they have a Panther reward system with prizes. Also, um, to support attendance and grades and rewards, Stewart Panther staff does porch visits, and they have visited over 600 student homes in less than six months. One final highlight, uh, counselors help create a very slick welcome for future Stewart Panthers through a virtual tour and video. It's on their website. You got to check it out. Next slide. Washington Elementary, they have a Good News Network, and they highlight weekly news stories to help celebrate life and share thoughts of gratitude during difficult times. Washington's Tier Two Intervention Care Teams use student data, and then also they pair that with their talented educators to support some of our most vulnerable learners. Also, at Washington, they feature a weekly newsletter from the counselor's office around social-emotional wellness um, and life lessons. It's a wholehearted, beautiful newsletter. And finally, Washington Elementary believes that all people learn and grow through restorative justice practices. So even when students may stumble, we work together to get back on track. And one more slide, please. This is Whitman Elementary, and they use whole child practices, not only for students, but also a part of their staff meetings. Whitman knows that SEL is for everyone. So teachers practice relationship skills like empathy and compassion by participating in relational circles in the opening of staff meetings. For students, Whitman partners with families on common language and strategies, um, to practice SEL at home. And they have, in their SEL lessons, they, they really leaned in hard on relationships and social awareness. So lessons may include topics like appreciating diversity, taking perspective, empathy, and respect. And final slide, um, I just want to say again, these are just a few quick highlights. They don't begin to encapsulate the stellar practices throughout our district, um, and I wish you all a happy whole child month. Thank you.
Madam President, before she leaves, I'd like to take a moment to recognize, uh, Director Laura Allen and her team. Um, th- they are whole child, uh, champions to the truest state. And so they, they are out around the community and, and throughout the schools recognizing whole child champions. But there are no bigger whole child champions than Laura Allen and her team in, uh, the whole child office. So let's give a round of applause to Laura and her team.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you for the presentation. Thanks for sharing just a little glimpse into all the different schools and their culture and the different strategies that they've been implementing. It's nice to see kind of this snapshot of all the work happening across the district, so thank you. Um, any other comments from members of the board? Okay, we'll keep moving on, but thank you again. Um, going on to item number, that one. Oh, I didn't, go ahead.
Director Baumright also. So I just want to say thank you, Laura and her team, um, because it's, this, uh, this part of education is really critically important and in many aspects, some of the most important education. So I really appreciate we have, uh, such a strong team leading this for our district. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and I'd like to, to also thank Laura and the team, um, for making, putting Tacoma, uh, public schools really on the map in terms of this nationally, and it is just, uh, it is so exciting to be at a school district where a whole child, whole educator isn't just a phrase. It, it's a way of life, and, um, I, I think it's, uh, just watching this presentation, I can't stop smiling. You know, it's just so great to see the kids, and they're happy, and the teachers, and being back together and, and longing for when we all can be there and knowing that you guys have, uh, are working five times as hard when they're remote, um, to, to make sure that the SEL is happening. So thanks for that. And also that this is, I think, the first year that we're, we're making the SEL plans, you know, at the secondary schools as well. And so really wanting to, um, say what a tough year to, to implement, um, SEL practices in the secondary environment when everyone's remote, but I know you guys are, are managing to make a difference in, in a time when, um, it couldn't be more important for our students. So thanks for it, for pushing through a tough year and always being so good-natured and upbeat about it. Thanks, Laura, and your team.
Thank you so much. Have a great evening.
Senior.
Thanks, Laura. Mute. Did you, were you going to make a comment?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to also say that I know that this work, um, has been in the making for many, many years, and there are people, um, who started this work, uh, that aren't with the district anymore. And I just appreciate the legacy of it being carried forward, um, and the way that it's being carried forward, and the importance that, um, it's continued to put on, um, improving, um, SEL and whole child and just the culture and climate around that. Um, and, uh, as always, school counselors are like some of the best humans on the planet. So, um, I usually fawn on them, so I'll just like throw that little pebble out there, but, um, thank you for the presentation.
Okay, thank you again. So we'll move on to the superintendent's report, number seven. COVID update.
So for our COVID update, uh, this evening, we're going to give you a treat. I think, uh, Elizabeth, Director Baumright, we're going to see you smiling again. And so I've asked Michelle Ral Lewis, who directs our preschoolers, uh, to kind of give us a little preview before we show this, uh, video from Stafford Elementary School. Michelle?
Hey, good evening, and thank you for having me on. I am so excited that our preschoolers about to come to school this week. Um, you're, are going to see a video of Stafford Elementary and one of our fabulous teachers, uh, Miss Stephanie, um, greet her students and her excitement of being prepared for her students and having them, um, be ready for, for class and seeing their excited faces and that teachers are just welcoming them, and they're, they're just so happy to have in-person instruction back. So I hope you enjoy this video. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Oh, getting some feedback, Tom.
Well, I think like no matter how many times I do this, the first day of school always gives me like first-day-of-school jitters. I can't like help it. But it's like this exciting first-day-of-school jitters because you don't know what to expect, and we've missed this for so long. It's like, I'm ready, I'm ready to jam out, I'm ready to get like all of this energy out that's been piled in for months and months that I'm ready to give to my students. Ayodhya! Are you ready? Which one? One, two, or three? Three? For their first day, I just want them to know that this is their space. This is their space to grow. This is their space to learn. I want them to learn how to use their environment in a safe way, and of course, it's going to take practice. Um, finding ways to create like a safe space in our classroom that's still fun and welcoming for everybody, and that doesn't feel like a hospital, you know? It's, it's still school, and it's still fun, and we still want it to feel like that. Now we can put all the things that we've learned virtually to practice. Um, and we can also start to learn about each other in different ways, you know, learn about each other's cultures, learn about each other's languages, and I think that's a beautiful thing in preschool is we're able to take that minute and step outside of ourselves and see that there's a whole world waiting for me. I'm, you know, I'm ready, and there's so many things out there for me, and that's what preschool's all about, you know? Your learning adventure is just getting started. Six, seven, eight, nine, ten. I'm not just helping students, I'm helping families realize the potential in their students. It's like the most beautiful feeling when families are able to come to you and say, I can see the difference in my student. I can see the confidence in their skills, and that tops everything. It's amazing.
Thank you.
Were you going to say any more, Superintendent Santoral? I have a couple reflections. Okay. I just want to, um, say thank you for that update. I think, um, just for, um, members of the community who were hoping for a more like rundown of the numbers and where we're at, I would encourage you to refer to our study session agenda. Superintendent did a great job of going through some of the more recent updates, so please refer to that. It's really helpful, though, to see kind of the students returning in action. Like, I think we all have images of what, unless we have children in school at these ages. We all just have our memory of our experience or our memory of when our kids were in kindergarten to draw on, to know, to think about what the current context might look like. So I think the video is really helpful to bring to life what the experience is kind of looking like for our returning preschool students and our returning kindergarteners. So thank you for putting that, um, in this week's agenda. Any other comments from members of the board before we move on to the consent agenda? See, shaking heads? Okay, thank you, Superintendent Santoral. Moving on to item number eight, consent agenda. Um, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I move to adopt.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of adopting the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is adopted. Item nine, policy matters, and there are no policy matters tonight. Item number 10, financial report. Presentations on the financial health of the district will be made during regular board meetings on a quarterly basis. The next quarterly report is planned for February 2021. The next quarterly report is planned for February 2021. And monthly financial statements can be found on the district website at www.tacoma schools.org backslash departments, backslash business and finance, and then on to financial reporting. Item number 11, curriculum instruction. There are no curriculum instruction items tonight. Item number 12, business matters. 12.1, approval of Head Start non-federal share waiver.
The Deputy Superintendent, on behalf of the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, recommends that the Board of Directors approve the district's request for a waiver of the Office of Head Start non-federal share requirement.
Is there a motion to adopt item 12.1?
I move to adopt item 12.1.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments about the site? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting item 12.1, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is adopted. 12.2, approval of the budget development guiding principles revised 12/15/2020.
Thank you. The Chief Financial Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve the Budget Development Guiding Principles revised December 15, 2020.
Is there a motion to adopt item 12.2?
I move to adopt item 12.2.
There a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from the board? I'll share one. I'm seeing none others. I just want to recognize Rosalyn and her team for the leadership on the budget development process. A couple of years back on the board, when we had to make some real serious cuts and real tough decisions about how to move forward, I think these guiding principles helped to serve as a really good foundation for the partnership between the board and the leadership team on the budget development process. Principles really helped the board reassure that you know, you knew what our priorities were as you worked to make recommendations about some of those changes. And I think they continue to serve as a good foundation for our communication back and forth at the policy and operational level about the budget development. So, so I thank you for continuing to put these in front of us as we work through this process.
Yeah, thanks. I was just actually going to say something quite similar to that and to say that I, I, I find that the, that our goals and I see where our goals are reflected in, into the decisions that are made. And that's reassuring on many levels. And also I serve on the Citizen Finance Committee for, for the Audit Committee for the District. And it's, I see it throughout. It's not just budget development. And I want to thank Rosalyn, you and your entire team because everyone is very committed to being transparent and being thoughtful and compassionate in, and in all of the decisions around the board and making sure that they're aligned with the policies and, and priorities that have been set forward by the board. So thank you for that.
Any further comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting item 12.2, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Rosalyn. Item number 13, other business. Item 13.1, Discussion of Superintendent's Recommendation for Wilson High School Renaming pursuant to Policy 6970.
Thank you. Tom, if we could get the first slide, please? So tonight, we're going to have an, we're going to have an opportunity to discuss the renaming of Woodrow Wilson High School. We have a district policy that outlines the process for the renaming and we have definitely followed that policy. So if you looked at the next slide, our process really began when members of the Wilson Alumni Committee and other citizens wrote to Principal Bernadette Ray, members of the board, and to the superintendent, citing the inappropriate and harmful nature of keeping Woodrow Wilson's name on one of the Tacoma School District's most valuable, on one of the Tacoma School's most distinguished high school. Due to Woodrow Wilson's history of being a KKK sympathizer, as well as his holding and participating in other racist ideologies and practices, the committee agreed that in this era of working to eliminate racism in all of its forms, it was time for a change. On the next slide, you just, you'll see the, the, the committee names. Principal Bernadette Ray was selected to follow the tenants of Policy 6970. She solicited and assembled a committee. Thank you to each of those people who volunteered. The list you see, you see includes former and current parents, community members, former students, and other esteemed individuals. A survey was, a survey was presented to this, through social media and the Wilson and Tacoma School District websites to collect a sampling of thoughts about the renaming. The committee made a preliminary report to the board regarding their thinking and then presented a recommendation to the superintendent as far as, as part of policy. So on the next slide, you see the recommendation from the committee. So the, the, the committee recommended two options. You can see one is the naming after a person and the option two was to keep the name at Wilson. Just for a little bit of background, Dolores Silas led the city of Tacoma as an educator and beyond. She was the first African-American woman to serve as an administrator in the Tacoma Public Schools. She was also the first Black woman to serve on the Tacoma City Council when she was appointed to that role in 1991. She served as president of the Tacoma NAACP, elected in 1978. She was recognized by the city of Tacoma with a Lifetime Service Award in 2019. And she received the Tacoma Historical Society's Star of Destiny Award in 2019 as well. Ms. Ruby Bridges is an educational justice icon who now leads the Ruby Bridges Foundation, which is dedicated to education at all levels, including HBCUs. She made a wave in her collective history related to social justice and a request of many survey respondents. Her legacy has a bit of connection to Tacoma educational history. She became the first African-American child to integrate an all-white public school, elementary school in South New Orleans. And Tacoma's McHarver Elementary in 1968, to promote racial integration, became the first magnet school in the US, drawing students from around the city. So that's the connection. Survey data leaned strongly to renaming the school after a person of color. Survey data also leaned toward renaming the school after a geographical location, and her name plays on the Narrows Bridge. Keeping Wilson, option two. The second option was to keep Wilson because it provides continuity and brand recognition for our rich history. You heard the first testimony of our speaker. The committee noted, and I quote, "That the school Wilson holds a strong tradition of excellence in our community under that name." And the committee and multiple stakeholders saw fit to advocate it as either a hall of different Wilsons who better represent the tradition of the school and the true excellence to come, or determining a completely new name. I also want to note that in their presentation, the committee said changing the name of the school will not erase this distinguished 61-year history and accomplishments of the students who attended Wilson, nor the legacy of the thousands of educators who have contributed to the school's high standard of academic success. What the name change will do is disassociate the school and our community from honoring someone who endorsed and supported systemic racism that our nation still struggles with, with today. So recommend, recommendation from the superintendent. I am recommending that the Woodrow Wilson High School be renamed to Dr. Dolores Silas High School. And the key things that I used for, to make my decision is number one, it does, it is one of the recommendations of the selection committee. So it follows the policy. I think Dr. Silas is an outstanding local woman with roots in Tacoma community and in the Tacoma Public Schools. And finally, I believe that keeping the Wilson name, that keeping the Wilson name would help us disassociate the school and our community from honoring someone who, who supported systemic racism. So that's my recommendation that we go with Dolores Silas. If you look at the next slide, it talks about the transition. And it is, it is, it is a huge transition. If the board decides to vote to approve the name of Dolores Silas, I would suggest that we begin in July or, you know, in the summer of 2021. I believe it'll take a minimum of an 18-month transition. I certainly recommend that we remain, that we maintain the current mascot. The Silas High School would be Ram Country and the colors would remain red, white, and blue. We definitely, I've talked to Principal Ray, and we would honor the current student regalia, leather jackets, t-shirts, masks, et cetera. And students will have the grace to make those changes. And we would work with Principal Ray to determine the specific timeline for changes. There are some major, major things that we'd have to do and the costs look like they could, cited could minimally be around $400,000. I'm just being honest about that cost. And would include, you know, if you start thinking about building exteriors and interiors, uniforms, leather hood, design items, and all those, all that regalia you see in the picture, it would be important. So that's my recommendation. Questions? Thank you. Excuse me, I have, Principal Ray is here with me. So if you have any, you know, really hard questions, you can direct them to her.
Okay. Thank you Superintendent Santorino. So I want to open it up for, this is a first reading. So that would mean that if the board were to take action on this, it would come back in a future board meeting. So I want to open up to members of the board with questions or comments for Superintendent. I'll start with Director Keating.
Thank you for the presentation. I was curious, just the timeline, because it's been, this conversation started some time back. So I was curious about, do you happen to know like the, with the surveys that did go out? Like what, what, I don't remember what the numbers of participation were in the surveys. Do we know?
Principal Ray could answer that question. Bernadette?
I do, and I'm looking to see the exact numbers. I should have them. But I'm going to say that approximately 3,800 surveys were returned. So it was certainly a sampling of the greater community.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from members of the board? Director Leon, is that a hand or I can't?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think this shows the seriousness of how, you know, this, our whole district is analyzing this systemic racism that we've gone, we've gone through for a long time and how we're starting to make steps to remove it and improve it. So I do understand there's a lot of emotion around, there are traditions and names that people have used. Heard of where they went to school, as we've heard from our speaker today. And I know it's hard, right? It is the right to not use that name, Wilson, given if it doesn't have the Woodrow in front of it. I think the, the message will get lost if we do that with someone that's worthy of all the hard work that have been done in anti-racism, which you brought us two names and chosen one that you're recommending. So I do think it's, it's the right thing to do.
Any further comment? Director Bombright?
This is really a tough, a tough call. I know from the community perspective, and I've heard a lot from, from folks one way or the other. I did, one of my daughters did graduate from Wilson and I, I did chat with her and, and a lot of her friends as well. And even though they have a strong allegiance to Wilson and they, and they will always consider themselves graduating from Wilson High School, they're also really compassionate about the, the feeling that those who, who, individuals of color who are attending or have attended Wilson and felt like the name reflected badly upon the place where they went. So I think that it's interesting. It's, I don't know if it's a generational issue or not, but I know that the, it seems that, that it's time. And, and I think that Dr. Silas is a wonderful example of, from our own homegrown Tacoma school system that, who excelled and succeeded in, in, and brought forth new opportunities, especially for, for young students of color. So it's a great message. And hopefully, I know that I have great faith in Principal Ray to be able to make this transition, which will be an interesting one, to be able to have the students that are, that came in when it was Wilson, be able to, you know, have both kinds of, of, you know, paraffin, regalia, as you said, Superintendent, but to also have everyone be engaged in how this process happens, the students. Because I know that they, they are very, Wilson is a wonderful high school. Not that, that, the name change isn't going to change that. And I, and I'm just hoping that, that as we think this through, that we're able to make this transformation in a positive way and always, always, always be able to celebrate the, the great experiences and successes, academic, athletic, through the arts and otherwise of, of all past Wilson graduates, who I know our own doctor, I mean, Director Keating is one. So.
I guess so. So I, I wanted to thank the committee for the work that went into putting all this together. Thank you to the almost 4,000 people who chimed in via the survey. I can't sit here comfortably and not say what needs to be said. You know, racism, oppression, the coddling of racists will have no place in our schools, in our community. So at some point, we got to take a stand and kind of wipe the slate clean. Wilson is a great high school. The people who went to Wilson are great people. That's not going to change with the name change of the building. It's also very important that we highlight someone from our own area. Dr. Silas is, is a beautiful woman, has done great work. And I think that the legacy of the athletes and the students will carry on. But I think it's time that we, you know, start fresh. So thank you to the committee as well as the 4,000 responders to the survey. There's a lot of work ahead, but it'll get done. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate all the comments I've heard from the board. I just will offer, and I'll, I want to second a lot of what has already been shared in terms of your thoughts and comments. But I also to want to, from a historical perspective, you've heard me ask the question in a board meeting past, like, does the board have a collection of all the high schools' yearbooks? I want to know, do we keep them all? Or is it just Tacoma Public Library that cobbles them together? I am very interested in the history of our district and being able to tell that story. For example, I'd probably have a really hard time if there was some issue with McHarver's name, of changing that name because it is associated with that legacy of being the first magnet school in the country. And then how will you track that through history? Like if, will it show up in Wikipedia as, whatever the new name was formerly known as McHarver? Like how do we, how can we in this process, if we do take action to accept the superintendent's recommendation, how do we through our process be good stewards of the historical records? So that's really important to me as we think about making a decision. I agree wholeheartedly with a lot of the comments that have been shared. But I don't think this is just an 18, like how do we do this operationally, an 18-month question? It's really to me a question about the legacy and about the history and preserving the record. So if something like this is, the significant action is taken and we do make the change, I just want to be sure that we're making it in a way that allows those people who do have that history of having gone to Wilson High School, lets them look back to, and have a reunion where they can find people. And we preserve that opportunity for folks moving forward. So that's my only add and request. Like if this, if we do take action in a former, like I said, in our next meeting, to make this change, I will be really looking out for a process that includes preserving the record. Any further comments from members of the board? Hearing none. Thank you for your recommendation Superintendent Santorino and Ms. Ray for leading this process. And also I want to acknowledge you, I know I said I was done, but I want to acknowledge too that there are lots of people in our community who are deserving of buildings named after them. So us not picking a name is not in any way undermining their contributions or undermining their, their worthiness of a name. If we had a thousand buildings to name, it'd be great to run down the list of the thousand folks in our community who we could pin them. the list of the thousand folks in our community who we could pin them all to. So I just, I just appreciate that this process that we have as the board doesn't include the board having to pick through a list of 100 recommended, recommended names. And again, Ms. Silas, Dr. Silas is one of those many, many people in the community who's worthy of a name. So I appreciate the recommendation coming forward. Okay, with that, we will move on to item number 14, report to the board, graduation benchmark annual report. Ms. Pace and Ms. Verhar, I believe?
Yes. Good evening. Can we get our slideshow up? Well, there it is. Good evening, President Cobb and Vice President Bonbright and Board Directors. Assistant Superintendent Marie Verhar and I are presenting our annual, annual report on graduation. Next slide. The benchmark on graduation is within strategic goal number one, academic excellence, which is stated here for us. All students will perform at or above grade level and we will eliminate disparities among all groups. We are going to begin tonight by taking a close look at the, at the data around graduation and Assistant Superintendent Marie Verhar is going to lead us through that endeavor. Marie?
Thank you, Toni. Next slide, please. This first data slide shows us that 89.9% of our students graduated in 2020, it's June of 2020. This is above Washington State's average of 82.9%. Tacoma Public Schools continues to exceed the graduation benchmark of 85% by 2020, reaching 89.9% for the 2020 school year, which is a 1/10th of a percent increase from 2019. The district's graduation rate has increased 4.9% over the last five years. Next slide, please. All student groups, with the exception of Native American, ELL, and special education, graduated at or above the district's former benchmark goal of 85%. The Asian, Black, Multi, and Pacific Islander student groups showed an increase in the percentage of students graduating from the year 2019, from the prior year. Next slide, please. The female, free, and reduced lunch and the homeless student groups all showed an increase in the percentage of students graduating in 2020. Special education students graduated at 4% less than 2019. However, there was a 10% growth leap in graduation rates for the special education student group from 2017 to 2020. The next slide are the key findings that I have mentioned as I have taken you through the last three data slides. Next, we will move on to our next steps regarding graduation. Assistant Superintendent Pace will take us through those.
So can we go to the next slide, please? There we go. We want to continue to build upon the strong partnerships that have developed between district departments, our building leadership, Title I and LAP to support targeted interventions in middle school math, as well as in other areas. And the special ed team, in collaboration with secondary ed director and building principals, will review data together and develop strategies to support special ed and general ed teachers. The special ed department will dive deep into student data, looking closely at credits, grades, and IEPs. And in addition, high school and beyond plans will be examined and we will continue to provide access to credit recapture opportunities. Next slide. We will continue to use our CAP process, our continuous achievement process, to identify specific student group gaps. We'll provide content-specific support, especially in the areas of alignment of standards, instructional resources, and professional growth opportunities. We'll continue our multi-departmental collaboration efforts focused on graduating all our students. We will continue our focus to provide equitable access to a quality education for all our students that includes a curriculum that promotes practices that lead to acceleration. And we will continue to monitor student attendance, behavior, and grades, especially at the freshman level, and intervene as indicated. In addition, Marie and I would just like to also mention that we have learned some things through living through COVID. We have a new learning management system, school ag, we have one-to-one technology, which will all help in focusing on specific needs of our students. That, that concludes our, our main presentation. We also have an appendix, which has the data around five-year graduation rates by student group and four-year dropout.
Thank you.
So I guess we're open for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I have questions, but I'm not going to start with myself. I'm going to start with others. Director Keating, any questions about the presentation tonight?
Yeah, I was curious if you could talk a little more specifically about the groups that, so, Native American students, ELL, sped students had the, in the graph, I know it's not up right now, but there was a pretty significant drop. And I, you know, also imagine COVID had, you know, was the factor to that. But I was, the number with the Native American student percentages went from 92.6 in 2019 to 81.3, if I, if I did that, if I read that correctly in the graph. And I felt that that was a pretty drastic drop. So I was curious, like, could you talk a little more in specifics of how the, the groups that have been identified that their graduation rates dropped from last year? How are they being supported to be on track?
So there's several things at play when we look at our data, especially as we get to this, some groupings with a smaller population. So on a given year, we might have a Native American population of graduates of 100 kids. And the next year, there may be 30 kids in that group in there. So we're going to see some variance in the percentages that would be, could be somewhat misleading. And so trends are something that we really look at. So you see a spike in special ed last year, but you know, it dropped again, I think 4% in there. There's a lot of different reasons specifically for that. For example, their students' IEP may require them to attend a fifth, sixth, or even seventh year by law, as far as support. But the way the state calculates four-year adjusted courts, those are, in essence, deemed dropouts in there from a school's graduation rates. And so there's a number of subtleties there. So when we look at the specific supports that we're providing our Native American students, and those students are dropping, it's, it's multifaceted. It's the schools, every school looks at every student and looks at what their supports are. They have cultural support from David Seith's team in there. I think it's important to note that our Native American population is extremely diverse in itself, hundreds of tribes represented. The schools have wraparound services and then, you know, the data folks provide very specific, so do they need specific support in academics? Which academics? Which graduation requirement may be a barrier? Is it credit retrieval, credit responsibility in there? So it's multifaceted. And so as we look at these, Director Keating, we're really trying to look at those trend lines. You know, for example, we've really kind of been stuck at that 89 spot. And I think we were, you know, one student away from 90 this year. And, you know, that varies year after year, because our cohort size adjusts a little bit as well. And so it's kind of a roundabout explanation, but we could get a more specific, I guess, we'd almost get to which students in the Native American population, which kind of supports would we have applied?
Thank you. That's helpful. I, it can be challenging to look at a graph like that and not really understand, like, how the data was collected and what it actually means. So, and I did, you know, when I, when I was preparing to ask that question, I was paying attention to the trends previous, and also considering that, you know, COVID has, you know, definitely impacted. But that just happened to be a pretty significant drop in comparison to the other groups that, you know, had seen or experienced a decrease in graduation rates. So thank you for that.
I would like to add that all schools across the state have to calculate graduation rates the exact same way. Every student has a unique identification code that is loaded up in what the state's system is called CEDRs. And so a student is on our records unless they are committed and confirmed, confirmed transfer to another school. And so there are no students that are not unaccounted for in Washington State. So they either have dropped out, or they are on and count as part of our graduation rates in there. So they could still be coming in. You can see in the appendix, I think our five-year results are around 91%. So we keep on counting them and it actually, our six and seven-year rates go up as well. But they're, all students are calculated the same way in Washington State and are accounted for. And that's even linked to budgeting codes. So funding comes through that unique student identification and full-time enrollment in there. So although I say there's variance within that specific subgroup, I didn't want the community to think that there's different ways to count them. They're all counted the same.
Director Keating, did you have additional comments or questions? Okay, before going on to Director Bonbright, I just want to piggyback off of Josh's, Debbie Superintendent Garcia's answer and Lisa's question, because it feels like every time we get a graduation benchmark report, we have similar context questions. So as we think about the future of what the strategic plan benchmark reports look like, like for certain student groups, there's some expect, like, the inside question for Native American students is one that we always have to look back to. So there's a way to, like, put that in, like, add that in. I think it would help, just a reminder. But just more, from more of like a strategic, like progress monitoring standpoint, for students with disabilities, like this piece around five and six and seven-year graduation rates. If we understand that that is a marker of us working their plans or we're in supporting them in the ways that has been determined as most appropriate, we should, for maybe that student group, have like a clear focus on, what's the five and what's the six and what's the seven, as we make sense of how we're getting, progressing, we're getting our students with disabilities to graduation, and not treat it as if we should just be looking at the four-year for that group of students, because it may not make sense, given their individual education programs. Similarly, my data governance knowledge might be rusty, but I think that students who, I know that for students who are impacted by homelessness, we flag that every year as, and that's a year-long designation. But I might be wrong, but I think for English learners in the high school context, like, they're given that flag as ninth graders and that continues through, like, that, that group is cohorted kind of at, at the ninth grade marker, even if they've tested out of programming. So I, my point is, if a student is enrolled in services for English learners as a third grader, it's likely that they transition out of program by the time they're getting to high school. So for students who are captured in the high school group, does that mean more of them are coming to the US later? Or like, I want to, I guess I'm wondering a little bit more about context for our English learners, and if we should expect that because their later arrivals to the country, that they might take a fifth year too. So maybe we should be giving more significance to looking at the fifth year. So my ultimate point is, like, with certain groups, we really want to hone in on what's the best way to look at our progress and whether or not we're supporting them effectively. Are there some additional context variables or context markers that we should be wrapping around the conversation about those groups from the start, as we think about getting more targeted?
We can have a lively conversation of all the different factors in there. And, and I think it's important, and you raise some very interesting points, you know, and sometimes, you know, the students that are a part of our CBT program, our Community-Based Transition Program, we've been very active at the legislative level to say, please do not label them as dropouts. They are not dropouts. They are active students that are constantly working on their plan. But the data doesn't show it that way. We, on our benchmarks, will be continuing to report them as five years, six years, and seven years, so that we can see that, that growth. Because I will tell you that, and Principal Ray will, if she's still on, may attest to this, we don't quit in there. And so they're working, even if we can't find them, they're actively trying to find students in there. Reengage them is another piece of there. Around the ELL population specifically, you have newcomers. We don't break the idea out behind newcomers, which we have students that come to us. And wherever your transcript is labeled, as if you are a ninth grader in a different country, may not be the same as ninth grade, but you are labeled by the state as a ninth grader or a 12th grader. And so you are assigned that cohort, but you may be first year to the country and you're still expected to pass exit exams, a variety of other things. So there's a lot of complexities to looking at the context of what that 64 is, or that 65, or 89.
Thank you. I don't, yeah, I just think as we think forward about strategic plan and benchmarks and priorities for this next cycle, some of this nuance, because we're not at 60% graduation rate, needing to really, we're at the place where we need to really understand the data in a more nuanced way, I think. So Director Bonbright?
Well, a nice segue. Thank you. So my comment was going to be, gee, we're, we're really at that point where there's only inches left on that graduation rate. So love to be broadening out our thinking on the, maybe establishing a new benchmark or a new baseline goal for our academic achievement benchmark. And, and, and one of the things that I've been excited to learn about this year a lot more is the VANI, the Verified Acceptance by Next Institution, which would, is, is kind of a way for the non-traditional, if it's, it doesn't have to be college, it can be, you know, an internship or a journeyman certificate, or whatever it is that they're working on next after high school as, as a marker. I don't know that we track that currently as a goal, or as a, to show that we do have students that are working toward, you know, they're graduating and then they're going to move on to something positive. So keeping that, that holistic approach all the way through, that was just a thought that somehow we integrate that in.
You're muted. President Cobb?
Thank you. Any other comments from members of the board? Director Leon?
Just thanks for, it looks like you've already seen, obviously, the issues around special education. Numbers went down. Overall, the numbers stayed about the same, slightly higher, that you've talked already about, you're going to give it some attention, the Special Education Department, SCL, and sorry, the ELL department are going to reexamine and see how they can help us get them. So thank you for focusing on that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Deputy Superintendent, did you have another comment? I see your hand up.
Yeah, I just want to, I want to really take some time to thank our staff, our teachers, our parent educators, our counselors, our nurses, our principals, our custodials, our nutrition services. And I'm, I'm not being flippant by raising all these folks up. When I ask folks most of the time, do you believe that every kid learns at the same rate at the same time? Folks say, no, absolutely not, you know, developmentally, all the different challenges. Our students have to take four years and by state law are not given permission to fail one class. That means that even though life may happen, stem transplant, domestic violence, drug impact, they have to fight through that and stay on the same track as everyone else, or they have to do more. And that doesn't happen without a huge team wrapping around them. And so 89.9 is not enough, and we are not comfortable with that. But that did not happen by luck. And so to all the staff members, all of our community partners, all of our families, you mamas and papas, you grandmas and grandpas and aunties and uncles and godfathers and grandmothers and you name it, that, that said, don't quit, please keep up your hard work, because we can get there. We can get there if we keep on going. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And I think it, to your point, it's on us too, to normalize taking more time and to normalize, just not Thank you for that. And I think it, to your point, it's on us too to normalize taking more time and to normalize just not quitting. Like, and when you get there, you'll get there and we'll be reporting you along the way. So, thank you for that. So, unless there are further comments, we'll move on to item number fifteen. Thank you again for the report. Item fifteen, board comments and reports, committee reports, community events, any updates from members of the board. And we also want to hear from our student representatives tonight too. I don't know, should we start with the students? Or, no, we'll give you some time to think about your thoughts, especially on any of the items of the, for the agenda. But we will call on each of you if you're still with us. But I'll start with members of the board. Director Strozer, any report tonight?
No report tonight from me.
Director Leon?
I just want to thank all those, the staff that have helped bring those kids back to the early learning years that we have going on right now. We've seen the videos, we've seen some presentations. I've gone to some schools on the outside and talked to families that I, you know, that I saw, some people I knew and how excited they were. Really, they were all just super, super excited to be there, doing all the precautionary things to stay safe. I talked to some of them after some schools, after they've been in school. And they said it felt like everything was going safely with the protocols that they had seen. Some of the teacher friends that I, that I know are also saying the same thing. So, I've been to every school, but the few that I've, that contacts in are, are just saying that it's a wonderful thing. To see the bright eyes and the learning going on and all the safety protocols being followed, because they're being followed well. So, thank you for all the staff, this energy. And I know there's still, still plenty of nervousness, plenty of concern in the community around this. And I, I do think we're doing the right thing by getting the kids in there slowly, phased and safely.
Thank you. I'll look back to Director Strozer. Looks like your hand's up.
My bad. Look, this, this, I, I forgot that, I only, I want to give a quick shout out to, to Gray Middle School and their principal Sean Martin. Because on Wednesday, I got to participate in Wake Up Wednesday, where they do their announcements. They are lively. They are, you know, you got students and staff in there. And he gave me a list of questions so I could serve as the guest speaker. And it was just a good time. I just wanted to lift him up for doing that work, because it really gets the students and the staff engaged on Hump Day. So, thank you.
Thank you. Director Keating?
The oil, well, first, since we're talking about schools, I did get the opportunity to sit in. On a, a English class at Wilson last Friday. And I just want to give so much credit to teachers working in this kind of environment. Staring at screens and squares and trying to get teenagers, I mean, all but teenagers to like participate and engage. And it was like, I have so much respect for the teacher that I got to sit in on. And, and I just think like the amount of emotional labor that goes into teaching in this environment. I don't know that it can be, really be underscored enough. So, I just, you know, experiencing it in that kind of a setting just gave me a deeper appreciation and understanding. Of just how hard our, our teachers and staff are working and our students. Because the students that, you know, in this class did some really, really great work. So, I just wanted to share that. And then, the only really report that I have regarding to WASDA. On our call today, the, on the twenty-fifth of this week, there was guidance that's been released. For performing arts and general performing arts recommendations. So, which I know our superintendent has and our team have. And I haven't really had an opportunity to like read through it. But I know that there's been a lot of questions about performing arts and, you know, what's going to happen with them. Because there's conversations around athletics, but not performing arts as far as like, you know, the public doesn't get to hear some of those conversations. So, I just wanted to share that. And then, the other thing I did is listen to the governor's press release today. And that our region that, which is Pierce, King and Snohomish County, has been shifted into phase two. So, I know there's constantly things to process and understand about what does that mean and what are the implications. But we, excuse me, will be in phase two on Monday, which I think is February third, might be fourth. I'm not sure. So, those are, those are the things that I have to offer. So, thank you.
Thank you. Director Bombay?
I think it's getting late. I'll leave time for the, for the students to talk. But I did want to echo what everyone else has said about the appreciation for everyone, that everyone's been mentioned. The, you know, the teachers, the students and whatever. I'd also like to commend the parents who are doing the, the, the big work. Of supporting students to make sure they're ready and able and engaged as well. So, it's, it takes a team and, you know, we're all in this together and working hard to, to keep these kids engaged and, and learning. And it's so great to see our youngest kids coming back to school. So, thanks to everyone that's making that possible.
I just want to share a thought. I don't have a formal committee report or anything tonight. But I'm losing time, so I can't recall whether or not we met in a regular business meeting context since the inauguration. But what the inauguration kind of signified for me was shifts at the US Department of Ed. And a shift that means that our senator is going to be probably leading the, the Help Committee. So, it just put me in the mindset of, we've had a, a really good history in the past of telling the Tacoma story. And thinking forward about like innovation and ways to serve and support students better. And communicating that both with legislators in Olympia and with our federal kind of delegation too. So, it just made me think, like, we've been really kind of focused on local response and meeting local needs and thinking about COVID. But I do think as a board, it's a good opportunity for us to, in the, the context of our strategic plan work. And just where we want to see Tacoma go in the next five years, ten years. To be thinking about the story that we tell and the kind of engagement we want to have. With those who are in positions to be thinking forward too about policy and legislation that can help support students better. Like even making like this transition to digital learning, help to get devices in the hands of more kids across the country. Like, how can we build on some of these innovations and think collectively about what kinds of ask or what kinds of, not advocacy lobbying? Because we don't do that. But what kind of education that we want to do with members of both our state and federal delegation? So, that's on my mind right now. And just thinking too about how we engage with the pol, all the policymaking and development. That's going to be happening pretty quickly. So, and, and our, like, we've got good representation between the work that Director Keating is doing. And we've got good representation overall. I'm not saying that we need to be doing something immediately different. But I just think it's a good time for us to be thinking forward about where we want to go. And I had a specific add to that that wasn't as broad. It's very targeted, but now it's slipping my mind. So, I'll go to the student board members and maybe they'll come back to me. I'll start with Jasmine. Are you still with us tonight?
Yeah, I am. Hi. So, I guess I just want to start with the new schedule that at least Sammy got. I'm not sure how my school operates in comparison to other schools. I know that it's all kind of all over the place and we're all making adjustments to specific schools. But at least with Sammy, on Monday, our entire schedule was completely changed. And so, going from two hours a day, like of live classes. To all-day live classes, but only two days a week, was a big change that I don't think a lot of students were expecting. And this has led to a lot of worries and students trying to figure out how they're supposed to change their schedules. Since we've adapted to the remote learning, I know that there are a lot of students who have to take care of younger siblings. And the days that they're now scheduled to be in class all day are days when their parents are working. And unfortunately, like, I think students' main responsibility and like focus should be school, but that's just not reality. A lot of students have responsibilities that take place in front of school. Especially when it comes to family and especially in the context of COVID. And so, I think just making sure that while we do need to be quick with the decisions we make. Allowing time for students to make those changes and adapt the way they need to before we start into something new. And while there's no really way to change this now, I do think it is a little unfortunate that there's only the option to be in remote. On the track to going in person and then Tacoma online. Because I know that there are a lot of students struggling with the remote format and having Tacoma online might just make that worse. But if they have no other option when it comes to, you know, taking care of their family or if they have to work. Or whatever it is that is in their life, I think it's unfortunate to only have one other option that maybe is worse for their learning. So, I would just, I know there's not really any way we can do that now, but I did want to bring that up to the board.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Can I, just before moving on to other students, W Superintendent Garcia. Can you clarify for us, like what the, I, it was my understanding that the schedule changes were for the next semester that starts on the third. Can you clarify the timing of the schedule changes for secondary?
You are correct, and so is Jasmine. So, I'll remind us all that are, some of our innovative schools run on a different calendar. So, it started the second semester for them started this week. Where our comprehensive and our non-partner schools, Oakland would be on the, is on a quarter schedule. So, there are different flexibilities based on when their school calendar started. So, I'll, if any student needs support in their transition from, because they have jobs or anything like that. We can work with the schools to support those things in this first week in the transitions. So, their technical, those schools started their semester before the other schools did.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to Nathan. You're next in my window. Any comments tonight?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Okay, cool. So, yeah, just, I hadn't really thought of it until Jasmine mentioned it, but schedules. So, yeah, I go to Wilson. So, our schedule's a little bit more, I guess, concrete. You know, compared to the, to some of the other schools like Sammy or Sota. But then, then again, I just, one, one problem I had is I wish that the district and that our schools could be a little more communicative about like sort of the, the changes coming, coming up. And I, I feel like a lot of students just don't really know at this point. And so, that's something I, I think I should point out there. And then also, sports. So, I know sports are starting next week, actually, Monday for high schools. And I'm going to be participating in cross-country. So, and I, I have friends who are in some of the other sports. So, I'd like to, you know, at the next board meeting, probably come back and tell you guys how that's going. And use from like a student perspective, how we feel about it. So, that's something I want to point out. And I was at the conditioning that Wilson was doing. I participated in that too. And I think that went very well. Everyone, everything was safe and it was just good to, you know, be back and be working out again. So, that was nice. And then the last thing I want to touch on is renaming Wilson. I want to come on, comment on that a little bit. So, last time we talked about this, I think I said, I was advocating more for keeping Wilson. But I, I've changed my mind a little bit since then. I'm still kind of conflicted. But I think I'm, I'm agreeing more with changing it to what the superintendent recommended and what the committee went with for Dr. Silas. So, yeah, I think something that really stuck out to me when you guys were discussing it all was Director Stroger's comment that. And there's no place for coddling racists. And I think that was a really important thing to realize. So, yeah. And Dr. Silas is like, as we've heard, is an amazing person. And I think it'd be great for school to be named after her. So, yeah, that's what I have to say about that. Uh, yeah.
Thank you. And I appreciate your comments tonight. And we will all look forward to hearing how athletics goes. Because it's one thing to have a plan on paper, but it's great to know how it actually works. And it's good to know that you felt like conditioning was safe and well-run. So, those are really good updates for us to hear. Thank you. Okay, Caitlin, are you still here? Do you have comments for us tonight?
Um, yeah, so I went, I'm a junior, so I took the PSAT on Tuesday. It was kind of weird being like back inside stadium for the first time since March, but it was really nice. And it just made me like want to go to hybrid even more. And also, like, I appreciate everyone in the district that made that happen. And then, secondly, like I also got the, heard about the schedule change this week. And like, all my teachers were saying that the school board decided on it. So, I was just confused like when that happened.
So, I can add some context to there. So, there was a group of principals, a variety of input from surveys. Several different factors. And then the science, not the science, the, the timeline of being able to bring students back. So, the principals made recommendations. The school board did not take any formal action on those schedules. The intent was, and continues to be, was is to, we have these two weeks for, let's just say for the Wilsons. And obviously not for the Sammies and Sodas. But we had to make the schedule change before the semester started. You can't change midstream, the classes of there, right? So, we went from making sure that those were lying there so that you could come back into a hybrid setting. And so, it was very intentional about talking about it last week at the study session, so that people could start to get a feel of this. And then, there was a communication effort that went out to staff and then to families. And then, you've seen it in the newspaper as well. And then, each school has been working with their school community to say, so this is what it means specifically for us in our schools. So, there are, there are tweaks based on different scenarios. Foss is not running a six-period day, so they have an eight-period day schedule. So, each school is communicating as well with their school community. So, in essence, this two weeks is really designed to be communicating to folks of that and that change.
And Caitlin, you didn't miss, like, you're probably like, I go to the board meetings. When did that happen? So, you're pointing out a really interesting nuance about this. Sometimes people say the district or the board or the, like, so it's really, sometimes it matters though. Because we all play slightly different roles. So, you should be like, just to clarify. So, you don't need to do that. But I just mean, like, sometimes the district superintendent and leadership team are in the position to develop the plan. And to make a recommendation back to us, to just update us. Sometimes it is an action that does require official board action and policymaking on our part. So, you're just pointing out a really good nuance around how we refer sometimes to the district or the board or schools sometimes. They're all different and when it comes to certain actions. And sometimes it matters. Thank you for that. What other comments or, not mean to cut you off, but anything else?
No, that was it.
Okay, thank you. We didn't leave you out. Indigo, did you have a report tonight?
Just a couple of things. I'm glad to see that we're transitioning into the hybrid for the little ones. I think it was really nice to see that we're safely and, you know, securely allowing them to just socialize with each other, which I think is really important. And it's good to see that that's happening. I, I know that there's a new strain of the virus that made an appearance in Pierce County. So, I just want to make sure that we're all aware of that. And I see, you know, the hand sanitizer, the masks and all that we're doing for the little ones. And it just, it's very reassuring to know that we're doing this the right way and not, really not rushing into it. And then, with the name change with Wilson, I think it's really moving in the right direction and it's something that needed to happen. And I'm glad that I, I live in a community that sees the problems that are going on. And really works to correct them and makes everyone comfortable in their environment. And so, this is really good. And I'm proud to go to Wilson or I'm proud to be a part of my school. I'm not attached to any certain name. I'm proud to be a part of the community that I'm in.
You're on mute.
I got a notification pop up that blocked my mute button, so I couldn't even see the signal. So, but I just wanted to say, any other comments from members of the board tonight or from students? I think it's been a good discussion all around on lots of really important issues and we'll just keep those flowing. Was hearing, oh, Deputy Superintendent?
Yeah, I, I think, you know, I think for all of us as we're going through this, we're all trying to gather as much input as possible. And the superintendent, you folks at the board, we are committed to. The superintendent, uh, you folks at the board, uh, we are committed to uh gathering feedback. Uh, we're going to continue to work with all different groups. Uh, we're gonna continue to work with our teachers on how to best deliver our instruction, our schedules, a variety of factors. And so although we're not able to all be in the room at the same time. I think it's just really important for folks to understand that we're gonna, we working with the nutrition service and like, what's the best way to do Neil distribution? Um, and sometimes it doesn't hit right off the bat the right way the first time. And so our job is is to take feedback, continue to adjust. And so. We ask for some patience all along that way in that journey. Um, you know, folks often say, well, I want to hear first. Uh, and then sometimes uh it's, you hear it from somewhere else. And so I, I'm just asking that once again. We uh, we continue to be patient with ourselves as we bring students back on campuses. We'll be thoughtful. Uh, we'll give updates regularly. Um, and that we, we work together. So, thank you.
Thank you. I just do have one last comment. Like, our, the email that we get at the, at the board level reflects. That there are lots of different opinions on these issues that we are debating. We'll get one email that says. It's, it's time for you to get back and finally you're moving back. Another email that says we're irresponsible for taking steps to move back. So there's always kind of this balance one for one. Um, similarly, as we think about returning to a hybrid model where teachers and students are in buildings in person. I know that not every teacher feels comfortable going back. So, but we are taking some steps to go back. So. I just think it's important right now that we give each other grace and that we all think, for those who are feeling uncomfortable about going back, to really think about what do I need to feel safe? And what are those things that I can communicate to my colleagues and to my students about what I need to feel safe? So that you can get closer to that mark. If it means like in your classroom, you want to set up, this is my bubble or at my desk or like us, we need to be comfortable with communicating about. And thinking about what we need to feel safe as we continue to make these changes. And we all need to listen to one another and to respond. So there are going to be some constraints, especially around our decision-making. We are limited to these two options at this point, Tacoma online or kind of rolling out the hybrid. So we do have some constraints. We can't create a scenario that. Um, works for every single person, every single family, but we are trying. But in all of this, I just, my um comment is that. We should be, feel comfortable to communicate what we need and we should respect each other enough to try to meet one another where we are and to try to get at those needs. So Director Bonbright, I see your hand too.
Um. I just wanted to also add that uh, that the, what the data is showing right now is that the schools that actually and 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 the. Guidelines that we follow um are strict, are the most strict in any, anywhere of any, any, any uh setting except for the. The hospitals and and, and so that, you know, we're doing what we can to keep kids and teachers safe, but it, I guess it's also, um, this is a plea to the community that it takes. It, for a successful return to school, it's going to take the community to take it seriously and to wear masks and to keep kids when they're not in school. Um, in, you know, protected from exposure and the same thing for, for teachers to, you know, not just when they're in school, but when they're. Home and interacting and to be really, all of us as a community need to get behind um being safe. So, um, because. The schools are as safe as we possibly can be at this point in terms of trying to limit the transmission of, of any um contagion, but it's just, it takes the village. So. Just please have everyone, you know, think about that and and be very conscious of um keeping this thing contained.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we will move on to item number sixteen, announcement of future board meetings. Thursday, February eleventh, we'll meet at six P M for our regular business meeting. Thursday, February eighteenth, we'll meet at six P M for a study session. On Tuesday, no, Tuesday, February twenty-third, the board will meet at six P M for a retreat. And then Thursday, February twenty-eighth. I think that is our regular business meeting. Um. Yep. And so with that, I'm seeing no further questions or comments from the board. I will call us adjourned. Thank you.